Good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for being with us for night three of the Urban League of Louisiana's Orleans Parish School Board Candidate Forum on Education Equity. Thanks for hanging in there with us. We are starting a little bit later than we expected, but it's going to be a fantastic evening, and most importantly, you're going to get to hear from candidates who are running for the Orleans Parish School Board from districts six and seven. I have a little bit of disappointing news to share with you. Unfortunately, in case you didn't realize, it is still 2020. And that means that unfortunately, our moderator for the evening, Oliver Thomas, is not able to be with us. We were having some difficulties, and he is not going to be able to join us this evening. But we've got a great backup moderator for you. Many of you know her, and many of you don't know her, so you'll get a chance to meet her tonight. Her name is Nicole Jolly, and she is the Urban League's Director of Strategic Initiatives. She's also the producer of all of these fabulous town hall sessions that the Urban League has been offering since the pandemic started. So you'll get a chance to see the face along with the excellent work, and Nicole is going to serve as our moderator for this evening. So these candidate forums, and we've done three nights now. We started on Tuesday night with candidates from districts one and two, and last night with candidates from districts three, four, and five. They are all a part of our Wake Up Go Vote initiative. This is a statewide, nonpartisan initiative that focuses on voter education and mobilization. It is all about having the information that you need in order to take the action that you must. That's the way we see it here at the Urban League. And we decided to focus this evening's work, along with the past two nights, on a really important report that we issued some time ago. It's called "Education Equity: Advancing Education Equity in New Orleans Public Schools." It is on our website. We strongly recommend that if you haven't seen it already, you go to the Urban League's website, which is urbanleaguela.org, so that you can pull this report down. It has a lot of very important information. And we thought that it was so important, we should focus our candidate forums on the report. And so you'll be hearing a lot about this report tonight, and you'll be hearing what our candidates have to say in response to a lot of what this report shares. Some of you may not be surprised with some of the findings. Some of you may be shocked. This is a report that everyone needs to get their hands on and really understand, because we all want to work together in order to address the disparities that exist in our schools and make sure that we can offer every child the best possible education. So we'll get started. Very, very excited to hear from this evening's candidates. I'll turn it over now to Nicole Jolly, who will tell you a little bit about how we're going to operate this evening, and then she'll get us connected with our candidates. Nicole?
Thank you, Judy. Obviously, as Judy said, I am not Oliver Thomas, but I will do my best to keep us going this evening, because the important part is, the important thing is that you all have a chance to hear from the candidates. So we will keep it moving. First, let me thank the candidates and the audience for your patience and for joining us tonight to share, candidates to share with the voting public, your thoughts and plans related to the topic of education equity. So as Judy mentioned, the Urban League of Louisiana recently released the second edition of the report "Advancing Educational Equity in New Orleans Public Schools," which analyzes data that is publicly available from the state, but from an equity lens. And this is the only report that does that. What I mean by using an equity lens is that the data is disaggregated by subgroups, such as race, ethnicity, economic status, and other subgroups when possible. The report tracks inequities in the areas of academic outcomes, school climate, and access, and illustrates the urgent need for racial equity in our schools. There are many gaps and disparities that exist, especially for African-American students and students who are economically disadvantaged. And because this is the second edition of the report, the Urban League was also able to look at any significant changes between the 2017 school year and the 2019 school year. By and large, progress was not made, or has not been made, as it relates to gaps and disparities experienced by African-American students and students who are economically disadvantaged. So I will share some of the specific findings of the report throughout the night. The questions will be centered on the disparities that the report found. But one of the reasons that we are using the report for tonight's forum is because it shows the public what the reality is for our schools and our students. As candidates for school board, the report can be a very helpful tool, and we hope that you will use it if you are elected to serve. While many different stakeholders have a part to play in addressing these issues, the Orleans Parish School Board in particular plays a critical role in advancing racial equity within our education system. So the way that tonight will work, we have two districts, Districts six and seven. We will pull up the candidates for District six first and go through the questions with them, and then we will move to District seven. All candidates received the report as well as the questions in advance. And now I would like to bring up the candidates for District six. We have David Alvarez, Erica Martinez, and Carlos Zervingen. Make sure I'm saying that right. You can unmute yourself now as well.
There you go. Zervagon, would you?
Zervagon, thank you. All right.
Hello.
And, all right, so we're going to start now that the candidates are ready. We will start by giving each of you two minutes to do an opening statement, and we ask that your opening statement focus on your statement on racial equity and your initial reaction to the findings of the report. So we'll do two minutes each, and I will start with David Alvarez.
All right, thank you so much. All right, so I read the report, and there's some key things that stand out to me, and I will link to my platform items. Number one, the way that we are grading our schools is rather dysfunctional. We are relying on a very myopic, finite set of metrics that are given to us by the state to give a score to our schools. And we all know that those metrics do a very good job of grading wealthy white suburban districts with As and Bs and poor black urban districts with Bs and Fs. So we know that just inherent in the design of this grading system, if you will, it does all of our children a disservice. So I am a key point, or a key aspect of my platform is to generate and produce a New Orleans grading system. And if you were to look on page 37 of the report, you'll see high-quality schools, and you'll see that there's actually a bunch of different metrics that we could be using. Things talking about how caring and qualified and diverse our teaching and leadership cores are, how nurturing, what are the nurturing conditions in our schools? How open are our schools to outside communities that open up at night? Do they have formal relationships with other agencies and nonprofits that are trying to help our community? These are all metrics that are, we are told that are in high-quality schools, but yet we're not actually using them when we grade our schools. So that's something that's important. Secondly, if we look at how many schools that we have deemed to be As, Bs, Cs, Ts, and Fs, we'll see that they pretty much align with poverty. The four schools that are A schools have less than half of their kids are economically disadvantaged, while the 26 schools that are Ds and Fs schools all have over 90% economically disadvantaged population.
You have two minutes if you want to wrap up, please.
All right, so basically, throughout my campaign, these are some of the key foundational components to my platform, which is equity and justice for all of our children. Thank you.
Thank you, David. And next, we'll go to Erica Martinez.
Thank you, and thanks for having me here tonight. First of all, I want to say that this report is really well thought out, and I appreciate your reading through it. Just to introduce myself a little bit, I've spent the last 15 years working in education and mental health nonprofits, specifically working with children and families with significant mental health struggles and traumatic experiences. Currently, I'm the Program Director and Founding College Success Coach at College Beyond, where I've built a program coaching economically disadvantaged students who are graduates of New Orleans Public High Schools to help them achieve their college dreams. So the report, a lot of this report was not new information to me. So the students that we serve generally graduate at around 16%, graduate college around 16% compared to their wealthier counterparts who graduate around 60%. And so we've been working for the last four or five years to help these students reach their college dreams. And so equity has to be on the forefront of these conversations. How are we creating equitable access to education? And when it comes to the school board, we need to be sure that equity isn't just a conversation and isn't just a report, but that we're ingraining and woving this into our policies and the way that we look at the policies that need to be brought about. Another bit about me is I also work to train professionals and other families across the state in trauma-informed practices. I myself am a foster parent. We fostered several kids that have been in different schools across the city. So I've coached and I've paired to kids across the schools, and so I've seen the way that trauma impacts learning and education, and I know that we struggle with teacher retention. We lost 900 teachers last year. We lose 20% of our leaders, and this is a problem. And I really believe that when we tackle trauma in really effective ways, that we could increase teacher retention. And when we're looking at children from the lens of empathy through a trauma lens, we're better able to support them as well as the entire community by supporting our kids in their learning environment and in turn retaining our teachers that way, too. Another big piece about my platform is I come from the nonprofit background, like I said, the last 15 years, and I love that the report specifically highlights the importance of connecting the community with our schools. We have so many experts and so many nonprofits across the city that are doing some amazing work, and we should be bridging those communities together to support our students so that we could all succeed. So thank you so much for having me, and I'm looking forward to these questions.
Thank you, Erica. Next, we'll go to Carlos Zervigan. And I'm going to turn my light on, because let's start. Thank you.
Fine. As well. Okay, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm Carlos Luis Zervagon. My background, I grew up in the Myland neighborhood here in New Orleans. I'm a graduate of the New Orleans Public Schools from Eleanor McMinn High School, class of '84. I was a New Orleans Public School teacher at Ben Franklin High School and a couple of the schools for almost a decade in the '90s. I have a certification and degree in history and art from Tulane University and a master's in history teaching from University of New Orleans. All six of my children attended the New Orleans Public Schools, and after Katrina, in rebuilding the schools, I was chosen as the founding board chair to reopen Audubon Montessori as Audubon Charter Schools. Did that for several years, and I've also been on the board at Ben Franklin, where I used to teach, where I just was president of the board there. With the report, it's an extremely important report, and what's so important about it is that it is nothing new. It's stuff we know. It's stuff we've been working on for decades. And what it highlights is the fact that we're not making sufficient progress. We have made progress, but we haven't made enough progress. So especially if you consider some areas that y'all talk about. For example, in special education. Right now, our system does not serve all children well. The decentralized system is not serving our students. And so I think that one thing we need to do in an equity lens is to re-centralize coordination of special education to be sure that students get what they need. And y'all do talk about that, which is what I teach and so forth. Need to take a very close look at discipline. The disparate use of discipline is chronic in our system. If we collect the data, like at the student hearing office, we centralize some of these things, we can do a better job. Other things that y'all pointed out that are extremely important, the schools cannot do it alone. This is a systemic problem. It is structural within our community. And as you point out, it has to do with the criminal justice system, housing discrimination, lack of a living wage. All of these things come to bear. And so as schools, we need partners in the nonprofit world, business community. Everyone has a seat at the table to plan how to move forward, to come up with policies and guidelines that can then be implemented system-wide. And I look forward to our conversation tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you all for your opening statements. We're going to move to the second, or the first round of specific questions, and these all come from data in the report. So for this section, I'm going to ask you to respond to specific data points and areas of the report. We will, you will not, you will each get your own question to respond to. So they will be different subjects that you all cover over the evening, but you will have a chance in round two to address any of the topics that you maybe are passionate about but didn't get asked directly tonight. So for this round one, I'm going to start back with David Alvarez for the first question. And your question is going to be about ACT scores. So ACT scores are often used to determine high school students' eligibility for dual enrollment courses, acceptance into many four-year colleges and universities, and eligibility for the Taylor Opportunity Program, or TOPS, which is the scholarship awards that are so important to our students. For the class of 2019, white students reported average composite scores of 27.9. African-American students reported an average composite score of 16.9. Hispanic students reported 17.8. And economically disadvantaged students reported a composite score of 16.7. This question is from one of the fellows in the Urban League's Policy Fellowship for Young Adults, Cameron Cannon, currently attends Southern University. She and many of the other fellows who are in our program were not aware of how important the ACT was for their ability to go to college, and they did not feel that they received adequate preparation considering how important this test is. So they thought that this topic was really important to bring to your attention. So Cameron's question is, a lot of families are not able to pay for ACT prep or the actual ACT. What would you want to see implemented by the school board to make sure that all students have the opportunity to be prepared for the ACT? And that question's for David.
Okay. How much time do I have?
Two minutes, thank you.
Oh, wow. Okay, well, before I even dive into that, you know, I want everybody to be clear, if we're going to be talking about equity, the majority of our citizenry is not going to go to college and finish. I mean, that's the reality. That is, that is the reality. So I think it's foolhardy to have a school system that funnels every student, I guess theoretically, into an institution of higher education that will not graduate but 40%, 45% of the individuals that enter. So I think that, number one, respecting that, you know, college is great and we can go. Number two, knowing that for a healthy community, you cannot tailor your entire system to go to college. It would be foolhardy and to the detriment of the community as a whole. Having said that, for the individuals who do want to go to college, we have to provide supports and establish resources, strong resources, to assist those individuals. For example, you can have formal relationships with groups, provide resources through city initiative so that we have finances that will pay for these nonprofits and other folks who are going to come into our schools and after hours, and provide the ACT training, and that training is subsidized by the public, because the public is interested in getting our kids into college, understanding that our economy has drifted into, you know, having to have more college education than not. I think that those formal relationships can be codified and rewarded and incentivized through our contractual relationships and the way we grade our schools. So if we have a school that might have a very high poverty, economically disadvantaged population that's doing poor on the standardized test but is doing excellent in opening up the school after hours and providing hours upon hours of documentable ACT prep for their population, then we should incentivize them by not only having financial incentive, but also having a better school score, a better assessment of how well that school is serving the community. So I think that's an example through policy the school board can help facilitate and incentivize our schools to help kids who do want to go to college to do the ACT prep that is necessary.
Thank you. Thank you for your response. The next question will be for Erica Martinez. And your question will be about advanced credentials. So earning a diploma with basic or advanced credentials provides students with a head start in a successful future. Of the class of 2018, 75% of white students earned a diploma with an advanced credential compared to 5% of African-American students and 16% of Hispanic students. Economically disadvantaged students were also less likely to earn a diploma with an advanced credential at 5%. What is your reaction to this large gap in those earning advanced credentials, and what would you do as a school board member to address it?
This is quite unfortunate, and this is, you know, this really speaks to students' readiness for the workforce and readiness for college. And so I do see this a lot. I've seen students that have been very well-prepared for college, and then I've seen students who were not. But I think this speaks a lot more to a bigger picture here. So I was having a conversation with a potential voter recently, and he was telling me how it was really difficult for him to make hiring decisions, and he wanted so badly to hire locals, but he would often go out of the state or out of the city to other universities to look for people to hire in his workforce. And one of the things that he had a thought of was, what about early childhood education? Like, we're kind of jumping ahead here to graduation, but this is where the gap begins. And when children aren't reading at third grade level, at third grade, we know that from there on, they're missing the opportunity to learn, because from third grade on, most of the learning comes from reading. And so we need to come back and start from the very beginning. So how are we preparing our children and teaching them how to read? How are we preparing them early on so that they have what they need to continue to grow and learn as they progress through the different grades? So this is, yes, this is highlighting one equity problem, but this starts way younger. This starts at the very beginning. So the school board needs to start looking at this. Of course, we need to think strategically, how can we help the students that are in high school now, but let's also plan for the future by going back to the beginning? And how are our kids being prepared? Early childhood education is something that has been talked about a lot. We're talking about it on the state level and on the city level, and this is something that where the school board members need to be leaders on the forefront of this as well, and pushing to make sure that our schools are preparing our kids from the front end so that this gap isn't as wide by the time that we're getting to high school.
Thank you, Erica. And now we will go to a question for Carlos. And your question is going to be on the topic of truancy and school attendance. So students who are chronically absent, meaning that they miss more than 10% of the school year, are considered truant. Of a classroom of 30 students, 12 desks are empty at least 10% or more, 10 or more days during the school year. In January of 2020, OPSB, the Orleans Parish School Board, launched a new initiative called Keeping Kids in School to engage the community in efforts to reduce truancy. What would you do as a school board member to impact truancy and school attendance in New Orleans?
Time myself.
Thank you.
One thing we have to look at are the causes of the truancy, okay? And the old-fashioned idea is that somehow the students are walking the streets, or they're up to no good, or there's, you want to blame the students. But very frequently, truancy, as it would be called in a punitive way, is absenteeism that is due to issues at home. In terms of so many of our students, in terms of being able to get three meals a day and have support at home when they are income constrained, asset limited, as y'all point out in the report, then that also causes issues, housing insecurity and so forth. So I know that as a teacher, I saw this very frequently. It's not just in the special ed areas, it's across the board. So I think what we need to do as a board is examine the problem and look for the real causes, get data on the real causes so that we can address what the problem is. And we can't do it unless we have that information. So my guess is it's going to have to do with economic and other circumstances at home. We also need to look at the tracking systems that schools use. Are they really tracking the kids properly when they're at school, when they're not at school? We may find that the truancy rate is actually higher than you specified. It could be lower. That can be used to craft policies and oversight regimes that then can be implemented by the schools themselves. Whenever we're crafting policies and looking at problems like this, I would say that we have to bring everybody to the table, all stakeholders, parents, school operators, experts. We bring them to the table to look at the problem, get the facts, then act on the facts in a way that is student-centered, in a way that looks at how do we build equity and advancement for our students in every decision that we make. And as a school board member, that's your job to coordinate that effort to solve those problems for the benefit of the students.
Thank you very much for your response. And we will go back to David for the next question. And your question is about access to Advanced Placement Courses, or AP courses. In the 2019 school year, economically disadvantaged students were underrepresented in AP courses. 77% of high school students were economically disadvantaged overall, but only about 10% of AP test takers were economically disadvantaged. Similarly, African-American students were underrepresented. African-Americans students make up 78% of the overall high school student population, but only 11% were AP test takers. So your question is, what do you believe contributes to these disparities, and what can OPSB do to support more economically disadvantaged and African-American students participate and engage in AP courses?
All right, well, I mean, there's two main things that contribute to this. One is poverty, the second is races. Okay, so these are, these are, these realities that you just described, that this report does a great job of highlighting are realities across this country. They're exacerbated here, because unfortunately here, although we are a majority black town, we have had our schools decentralized. And the, you know, the main tenement of an equitable community is how the resources are distributed. And post-decentralization, it is clearly an unequitable distribution of our resources in our schools. I mean, this is clear. I don't think anybody on either side of the reform, non-reform, traditional would argue. So, you know, through the lens of equity and through the lens of causation, you know, we got to talk about poverty and race and racism. I mean, that's important. But then, you know, when we look at it applied here in a majority-black town, we got to look at this decentralization and how it is impacting the, you know, not only the numbers of our kids that are taking AP classes, but we're talking about the numbers of our kids that are being kept in a school, because if they're moved, the school operator loses money, because maybe that kid has an extra amount of money attached to him or her because they have special needs. Or maybe it's another opposite scenario where the incentive is to keep a seat open, because if a student who may come in, that may decrease the overall school score, because that student might be weak in standardized tests. Point is, is that the scenario that we find ourselves in with this decentralized system that really doesn't incentivize any centralized effective manner to make our schools more equitable, it actually disincentivizes it ultimately by design. And so I think that we have to be honest about this. And this isn't, this isn't my opinion.
I'm asking you to wrap up, if you can.
This is to conclude, this is a conclusion that is shared by researchers that have looked at the results of this. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and we will go back to Erica, and we're going to go back to the question about ACT and give you this question that was from one of our policy fellows. Just a recap, essentially, this data point was about the gap between the average composite score for white students, which is 27.9, compared to the average ACT score for African-American students, which is 16.9, Hispanic students at 17.8, and economically disadvantaged students at an average score of 16.7. So Cameron's question was, a lot of families are able to pay, are not able to pay for ACT prep or the actual ACT. So what would you do to make sure that all students have the opportunity to be prepared for the ACT?
Well, I actually have some good news. So the ACT has been working on this issue as well, and so they have a new resource for underserved students. And so if a student qualifies, a student can qualify for a waiver so that they don't have to pay to take the ACT test. And that's if the student's family's income is less than $36,000 a year, they're a first-generation student and/or a minority student, and in some combination of that. And so what that's going to include for them is they're going to have four free chances to take the ACT, which is great. And when you sign up for that, you also will now have access to a free test prep program from Kaplan that generally costs other people $99. And that course will be available for that student for a year, for them to be able to study and prep for that test, which is a really great resource. It's new, and so I'm sure our schools, all Um, it's new, and so I'm sure our schools all do not know this yet. But this is something that we need to make sure as resources are available, that every student in the city knows that they have the option to have their ACT covered for four tests. And they have that ninety nine dollar Kaplan online study at your own pace test. Now, where the school board comes in is we also discovered under COVID that forty percent of our students did not have access to internet or um uh electronic devices to um access the like the computer. And so we need to, as a city, make sure that our students have what they need so that they can access this resource. And so that may be, um, you know, I think of resources like time and quiet spaces. I think of resources like um a supportive encouraging adult to provide for that that place for them to to study. But it's really exciting to know that the ACT is working on this. So it would be our job and responsibility to make sure that everybody knows about it and that the schools are using this resource effectively and early so that they can take advantage of those four free test um ACT test.
Thank you. All right, and now back to Carlos. Um, you are going to get, uh, we'll go back to the advanced credential um question, and this will be the last question of round one, since you have all received two. So for advanced credentials, earning a diploma, again, a basic or advanced um is key to a successful future. Um, the data point around this uh indicator was that seventy five percent of white students earn a diploma with an advanced credential compared to five percent African American students, sixteen percent of Hispanic students, um and economically disadvantaged students also had a five percent um rate of it of receiving the advanced credential. So what is your reaction to this large gap and those in those in earning an advanced credential? And what would you do as a school board to address it?
Thank you. Yeah, uh, yeah, as David pointed out, uh, that we have been through a period of time where there was a feeling that every single person in the United States should go to college. The thought was that the ticket to college and through college is the golden ticket to prosperity. But they didn't look at the correlation, and that is that wealthier people go to college. So of course, they have more prosperous adult hoods. Whereas uh the more working class kids were not able to go to college. So uh we want to make colleges accessible as possible. We want to make it as debt free as possible. We want to get every kid in who wants to go well prepared to succeed and get all the way through. Now, that being said, uh, I think that also we've had in this situation where there was a focus on the sort of reading, writing, arithmetic, drill and kill recovery program. The idea is that if you have a school that's struggling, it's the test that's telling you that there's a problem. So you want to get rid of that test by just drilling on reading, writing, arithmetic, and that's it. You eliminate music, you eliminate art, you eliminate everything. I think this has been a huge mistake. So this is part of that problem. We need to have alternative rich programming for all of our students, which includes these kinds of credentials that students can get. I feel like every forum ended up giving a plug to Rooted School, which started several years ago as a model, which I love, where they say, when you graduate, you've got a great college offer in the one hand, and you've got a great job offer in the other. I think that is a great model to use. And the fact that we haven't been giving that kind of rich curriculum to every school is an example of how we treat the students in struggling schools, okay? And part of that is because of how we judge those schools, how we grade those schools. So if we talk about the ACT and all that, the testing mania, we need to back away from that a little bit in terms of what, how do we evaluate the schools? Therefore, what kind of program do we offer the schools? So let's offer them a rich program of training, certification, arts, everything. And that is the way to have the greatest social, emotional, and academic outcomes. All the all the case studies tell us that. Thank you. That's my two minutes.
Thank you very much for your response. Um, that will take us to round two. So uh we have two questions in this round, and each candidate will have a chance to respond to both questions. Um, so the first question, uh, and we will again go back to um David. I think, right? Yes, that's the wording. Um, this question is, we've asked you to respond to data on important indicators related to racial equity in education. But we want to hear from you, what issue is most important to you that you would prioritize if you were to be elected?
Uh, well, I have several priorities. And two minutes left, you know, you, there's a lot of them. One, uh, it's a travesty and undemocratic for us to have charter boards that are have peoples that are making decisions about our children. They don't live here. Can you imagine somebody making the decision about the educational future of your child? And they don't live in your community. We would never elect anybody to our school board that didn't live in this community. We should never let elect anybody or have anybody sit uh in a governing capacity on our local charter boards. So I think that that's a very important piece. Secondly, I think it's, we need to own our schools. You know, we, everybody keeps talking about how we now govern our schools, but yet we use uh the state's method of grading, and that's not sufficient. It does a disservice to us. Uh, we are smart enough and capable enough to grade our own schools through the lens of culture and love and peace. And that's what we're going to do if I'm on board. We are going to have metrics that are equitable, that grade and incentivize our schools to integrate culture, to integrate community as as much as humanly possible. And we are going to advocate to our city government and our state government for the resources to make uh everything else necessary for this type of environmental change to happen. My priority is for citizenry to be healthier. And that is going to happen with a better designed school system. And that'd be, and I think that I'm capable of doing that.
Thank you very much, David. Um, we'll do the same question for you, Erica. Would you like me to repeat the question?
No, that's okay. Um, so what what my priority is is making sure that we have trauma informed supports in our schools across the board. So we're talking a lot about equity, but another piece that is incredibly important and plaguing our city is the amount of trauma. So I mentioned earlier that we have PTSD levels four times the national average. That's actually a conservative number because some research is saying ten times the national average. And so kids that struggle with chronic trauma, chronic poverty, generational generational trauma, um, these experiences, they're on guard and their brains are always in fight, flight, or freeze. And so students are not able to to access the area of their brain to learn if they're not feeling safe. And so our schools, we need to be making sure that all schools have a licensed social worker or access to the training and support so that we can make sure that our students are feeling safe. And this is, this does not have to be expensive. There are some great not, there are some great programs, evidence based programs that work. Um, the other piece of that is that when you're taking care of children and you're teaching the the adults that are caring for them how to be trauma informed and look at them through the lens of empathy, you're building relationships. And so schools that have done this well have done a much better job of retaining their teachers. But in doing so, we need to make sure that our leaders are also taking care of our teachers. So trauma informed practices goes beyond just taking care of our students. It's taking care of the whole, a holistic body of people. It's the students, it's the teachers, it's the leaders. But it it's going to impact our community as a whole. It's going to impact the city's workforce development. It's going to impact our city's crime rate, and it's going to increase our grades of schools because kids are going to feel safe and be able to learn. And this is something that we have to prioritize just as high as math and language arts. And I've, I know the research shows that when you do this and you do this well, you're going to naturally improve math and language arts abilities in our kids. And so this is something that's very important. Thank you.
All right, and Carlos, same question to you. Um, what what is most important to you and what issue would you prioritize if you were elected?
Um, okay, so you have to go to walk and chew gum at the same time on the board. And so if we must constantly work on replication of good programs, on vigorous supportive programs that are struggling, uh, we need to think about a strategic plan that looks back and looks forward with all the stakeholders at the table to make that plan. Financial stability is going to be a major concern going forward in this crisis. But for me, a very personal one would be special education. Uh, when I was growing up, I had fairly severe learning disabilities. I came out of sex, uh, sixth grade, almost unable to read. But then I got out of grad school with a four point oh, but it wasn't easy. My mother helped me, and the schools were a little help except for a couple of good teachers who really helped me out there. So for me, it's very personal when I see that children aren't receiving the education that that they deserve, that is designed for their needs. And I believe that to ask our operators to go it alone and to serve any child that shows up at random, no matter what the category of disability or the severity of it, that it can't be done, the compliance issues are overwhelming for everyone, and the children aren't being particularly well served. So I believe it's a district wide need that we can address at the district level. I'd like us to coordinate uh special education services with cooperative endeavors with nonprofit providers and have these uh agreements with schools to specialize. When I was at McMinn High School, we had a a section for a hearing impaired, severe hearing impaired, there's about thirty to fifty students. And another section for middle school severe learning disabled, profound learning disabled students. And they got the specialized education and that and that setting with the experts, but then they were also mainstream with us. I believe we can do that and stick to our center, to our school based management uh uh program, which I am very much for, but still support the programs to have specialized services that the central office takes a good, strong, supportive hand in coordinating. And that way, I believe we can serve the students much better. We can help our schools to do a better job, and that would be a major step forward in equity. And so that would be a personal thing I'd like to take on and do it with the support and cooperation of all the schools in a very positive spirit.
Thank you. Appreciate that response. And now we will do um the second question for round two, and we will go back to you, David. And this question, again, will be asked um of each candidate. In reviewing the Urban League's recommendations, um, in the last section of the of the report, are there any that you strongly agree with and how would you actively support?
Well, you know, I think that uh my support is pretty evident in my platform and the things that I say and the and the primacy I place in uh making sure that, you know, our policy prescriptions um take into account the institutional racism that exists and the poverty that exists in our community. We have, we live in the fourth most unequal community in the country. At one point, it was the most unequal community. This is this, this, this place, New Orleans, this beautiful, beautiful town that everybody all over the world wants to come and visit. We have our problems with equity and equality and race. And I think that the recommendations of the Urban League are wonderful in that they striving for this high quality education. I just want everybody to know that we have to design our scoring mechanism to reflect high quality schools that we find in this report. The schools that have the strong relationships with our culture and our community, the schools that prioritize more than just the test scores. Those should be incentivized, and we are not doing that. And I think that's a, that's a inequity that we need to address. Um, I think that access in general to, you know, rigorous curriculum and and other things, we need to start by a, you know, advocating for a centralized manner to address curriculum. Curriculum is one of those preempted, no touch kind of things from Act Ninety One. And we have to advocate to get that struck from the law because we have to have say in curriculum. And one example is the the lack of of climate change uh curriculum and talk within inside of a community that just fifteen years ago, we were forced by climate out out of here. We were all forced out of our town. We should be hyper focused on climate and and developing a citizenry that works a lo- alongside her sustainably and teaches her children how to roll with Mother Nature and not fight her. So I think that we need to to have more say in our curriculum in our schools than we currently do. Now, you know, uh, if somebody says. Well, all right, well, that's, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, and we will go to Erica's and question of the Urban League's recommendations. Are there any that you strongly agree with and how would you actively support them?
Yes, so I come, I come from the nonprofit world, and I know the amazing nonprofits we have across the city that are doing really great work. Everything from college access to mental health supports. And then our universities are doing great work. Xavier's got that, the teacher program where they're um building a teacher pipeline. My daughter has one of their teachers in her as her primary teacher, and it's been so great. And so we need to do a better job of bridging these communities together and making sure that the schools are using all of the resources that are at their disposal um at their fingertips, that they can use those effectively. And I'll give you an example. Just recently, we signed an agreement with a program that was an out of state program that's coming in to do a train the trainer model in trauma informed practices. But we already have that here. We have at least three programs I can think off of the top of my head that are addressing trauma in families. And then um the the school themselves, so Tulane has a huge trauma program where they just finished up a grant where they were training teachers. Now, did the school board reach out to those programs to find out what's already being, what's already happening? And being able to streamline that effectively to save that money? Now, we do have a great program that's coming on board, but I think we could have done this better. So we're miss, we're missing opportunities to really take advantage of what we have and the experts and the people that are developing in these different areas, these different programs. Um, and I see it, college access, workforce development, um STEM programs for for girls, dance programs and art programs. And the there's, we just have so many resources that we should, we need to be taking, taking those partnerships and making them happen. The other piece that's really important is transparency. I love that you guys mentioned that. I think we need to do a better job of being transparent. Um, NOLA Public Schools needs needs to be able to have a stronger communication with the community so that the community understands what's happening, when and why. And we saw some mistakes that happened with the reopening task force. Um, but they did pivot very quickly to start being more proactive with their communication. I want to see that continuing, and I want to see that continuing to where we're also listening to the voices of our parents and listening to the voices of our students.
Thank you. All right, and back to you, Carlos. Do you want me to repeat the question? Oh, let me unmute you though. All right, we can hear you again. Yeah, so if you look at the Urban League recommendations at the end of the report, are there any that you strongly agree with? And how would you actively support them?
Yes, thank you. Uh, one that I was really thrilled to see was when you point out that the schools cannot do it alone. That it's going to take the help of the business community, nonprofit community, universities, and everyone who is going to be actively engaged in this. That's one point I try to make to everyone, that we can build really amazing schools. We have amazing teachers. We have amazing school leaders. We do not have sufficient resources in those schools. But we have seen advancement. We've seen ACT scoring up, going up. We've seen graduation rates going up. But then they plateaued, and the reason why is because, as your report points out, there's a correlation. We have high, uh, we had the problems of African American opportunity, but also socioeconomic uh socioeconomic opportunity in education as well. That tells us the problem also lies outside of the school. The problem is about systemic racism, but also systemic poverty. And I think that the school board member needs to be the representative of the people on the school board, the representative of the school board and the schools themselves to say, Business Council, United Way, Urban League, everyone come together with us and let's all do this together. We cannot do it alone. Let's fight for better schools. Let's also fight for a living wage. Let's fight for ending housing discrimination. Let's continue the fight for criminal justice reform. That's one reason why I love the Forward New Orleans program. It's a big old call to equity, and it's got amazing coalition of partners involved, some of which you don't normally see working together. So I think that that's one of the most important things y'all said in your report about where the solutions lie. They don't just lie within the school, they lie outside of the school walls, and we are all in this together. We're all in this together, and I have been kind of critical with the people I know. Sometimes I talk to them in the business community. I say, you all kind of sit on the sidelines while we're in there fighting really hard for the kids. It's time to get off the fence. It's time to get involved and help us. We need your help. And now we're seeing they're starting to. And this is very exciting news. You all call for that too. You all are part of that movement. And I think that's one of the most exciting things about about your report.
Thank you. Thank you all three candidates. And that is the end of round two. So now we are going to move to um a commitments section. And this section is just simple yes or no. Um, so those of you who are muted, if you can unmute yourselves because we'll just kind of quickly go through each candidate for these two commitments. The first commitment is, will you commit to using the report regularly and to looking at data that is aggregated by subgroups to inform your decisions if you are elected? And I will ask David, yes or no?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
And Carlos?
Absolutely.
And our second commitment um is around prioritizing racial equity. So will you commit to prioritizing and practicing racial equity throughout your term as a school board member if you are elected? David?
Yes.
Erica?
Yes.
And Carlos?
Yes.
All right, um, that ends our questions, but we do want to give you each one minute to do a closing comment before we move on to. before we move on to District Seven. So I'm going to mute the folks who are not speaking. But David, you can start with your one-minute closing comment.
Okay, I'd like to start off by piggybacking off of what Carlos said. It says, we got to do this together. If we got to do this together, then please, neighbors, citizens, brothers and sisters, please be critical of this term autonomy because it works against our ability to work collaboratively and together. Autonomy is a euphemism for not wanting to be held accountable, and we should all see it as such. And in this report, we see a lot of issues. There are gaps. The report clearly says that the gaps, you know, the analysis cannot conclude why the gaps are there, but their gaps exist. And if we are going to address these gaps and close the gaps, we have to do it collaboratively, not competitively. We have to do it under the umbrella of our shared humanity. And we cannot do that if somebody looks at us and says they are autonomous from our decision-making as a community. That is not, it's, it's just cognitive dissonance, and it doesn't make sense. And I pray that my, that my neighbors see the value of the things that I'm saying and, and conclude that I am the strongest candidate to represent them in District Six on the school. Thank you very much.
Thank you, David. Erica, your one-minute closing comment?
Yes, I, well, I do want to thank the Urban League, not just for having us here and asking these questions and holding us all, all the candidates accountable, but for the work that you guys do and that you're continuing this regardless of who comes on the board. And I just thank you guys for that. This is important. I do want to say, I'm a first-time candidate. I'm running a grassroots campaign with a team of women behind me. I'm endorsed by Vote Mama, Independent Women's Organization, and La Femme PAC. I am in this race to help kids like my own two daughters and the kids of working-class people in my neighborhood. I'll never forget that it's their vote that's going to put me in this seat, and I will answer directly to them. The district needs a progressive voice to represent families and put students first. I have been on the front lines, working directly with our youth and families my entire career. I've parented or coached students for many of our public charters across the city, not just our strongest graded schools. And I will be a tireless advocate for all of our children and families, not just in our district, but across Orleans Parish. So my expertise and experience in mental health and trauma will be an asset to the school board as we create strategic plans and enter this new era of the school board. So I'm asking for your support as well, and I'm asking for your vote. Erica Martinez, one thirty-six on the ballot. And so I'm hoping that we can come together so we can put our students first.
Thank you very much. And closing comment from you, Carlos?
The one-minute comment, right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, it's, when it comes to equity, I have vowed throughout this campaign, and I think it shows in my record, that I will consider equity as the center of every decision we make. Whenever we make a decision, we ask, does it, does it to build equity in our schools? Does it empower families? Does it move our schools forward in their social, emotional, and academic wellness? Those are the only questions we really need to start with. Okay, that's, that's what means to be student-centered and to promote equity. The people who raised me were very active in civil rights in this town, and I believe that the right to an excellent education is an iron right. It's a civil right. It's a right that's not been met and not been honored, and I'm fighting to make that a reality. So that is why I'm in this fight, and I'm asking for your help. I'm number one thirty-seven on the ballot. Look me up at electzurigan.com. And same on my Facebook. I would be very proud to have earned y'all's support in this race. And I thank you so much for being here, especially hosted by the Urban League with y'all's reputation. It was an excellent forum. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, thank you all for bearing with us in the beginning and our late start. But thank you all for being with us tonight. And with that, I will take y'all off, and we'll bring up the candidates for District Seven.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and for District Seven, we have Nolan Marshall Jr. We can bring you up, and Jamar Wilson. Thank you both for being with us tonight. And you will have a similar format that you just heard with District Six. So we will start with an opening statement. You will each have two minutes. And we ask that you focus your opening statement on racial equity and you're, share your initial reaction to the findings of the report. And I will ask Mr. Marshall to go first.
Well, it's, it's a, a real pleasure to, to work with the Urban League again and to be a part of your, your forum. I've worked so closely with you all throughout the years. I was even on the board at one time, dealing with education, when Pat Taylor came to present his Pat Taylor Plan to us. Yeah. History, the statistics I've seen for decades. There has always been an opportunity gap, always racial disparities throughout education and throughout the history of this country. So for me, this is, this is, this is nothing new. But there are some very positive conclusions that you've drawn that I, I like very much and look forward to, to working with you on those conclusions. But the, the data, yeah, we need to understand the data, and more people in our city needs to see this data and realize the enormity of the, of the problems. And so that we can get the, the entire community involved in education because it is the most, the single most important thing that we can do. Education controls everything. It controls crime. It controls economic development. It controls everything. So, so goes education, so goes the quality of life in this city and really throughout this country. This country is in a crisis because of poorly education systems. Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall. And we will go to Mr. Wilson. Again, please, two, two-minute opening comments focused on racial equity and your reactions to the report.
Good evening, and thank you for having me here this evening. My name's Jamar Wilson. I am an educator in our schools. I currently work in special education at Kip Leadership Primary, and I'm a lifelong educator. Been working in schools for over ten years. And racial equity and what happens in our schools mean so much to me. Racial equity's been on people's minds a lot here lately. And I'm glad that racial equity is starting to pierce the mainstream conversation around education. And I want to be clear that Black and Brown educators have been having these discussions for decades. Unfortunately, as I read the report, I wasn't really surprised by what I saw because as an educator in our schools, I know how true the findings of the report is. Honestly, it made me angry and frustrated that our school system is still failing far too many of our students because it does not have to be this way. As we think about racial equity and what it means to ensure that all students have access to resources, supports, and systems to excel in the school and beyond, we have to think beyond surface-level equity. What I mean is that we have to look beyond an equity audit, hiring a chief equity officer, creating diversity statements. That's just the bare minimum. We have to think about and be ready to do the hard, deep, intensive work it takes for there to be racial equity in our schools. We have to think about creating school environments that reflect the virtues and values of our Black and Brown New Orleans community that uplifts all that is great about our city and her history. We must think about equitable funding for teachers, recruiting and retaining Black teachers and leaders, and what it means to truly provide the funding necessary for special education, ESL, overage, and low-income populations. We must think about what it means to ensure that every school in our city is a great school, and so our parents have real, authentic choice. And to do that, the district must be a leader. If the district and school board is not leading the way, then we can't expect the same of our schools.
Thank you. All right, we will get to the round one questions. So you will be asked two questions that are specifically related to the data and our report in this section. And you will receive different questions, just as we did for District Six. So we'll start with you, Mr. Marshall, with the first question. It was about ACT scores, and I will reread it. So ACT scores are often used to determine high school students' eligibility for dual-enrollment courses, acceptance to many four-year colleges and universities, and important here, eligibility to the top scholarship award. In the class of 2019, white students reported an average composite score of 27.9. African-American students reported an average composite score of 16.9. Hispanic students, 17.8. And economically disadvantaged students, 16.7. So if you remember, this question was from one of our, the Urban League's policy fellows named Cameron. Cameron Cannon is a student at Southern University. And she and the other fellows thought it was a very important topic because of the way that it impacted them personally. They were not aware that how much the ACT would affect their ability to go to college. So Cameron's question is, a lot of families are not able to pay for ACT prep or the actual ACT. What would you do or see, what would you want to see implemented if you are elected to the school board?
Well, ACT is, has been around for, for eons. You know, I took the ACT a few years ago. So it's, it's been around, it's not going away. We know it's biased, it's, it's tipped towards white families, so they will absolutely do better because of the exposure that they've had. But these are circumstances that, that we find ourselves in and we have to deal with. But ACT prep, many of the schools have ACT prep, preparation classes and courses and things for students. But there is, there's ways in which students can get free virtual ACT preparation for free. And if it's, and, and if they're not eligible for free, we should, as a school system, should provide that for all, all students so that they can do ACT prep on their own. But yeah, schools have, have been doing it for, for quite a long time, making this important. But the motivation to, to do the work is, is what's lacking in many instances. I actually remember many schools having problems with just getting the kids to pass the LEAP test and having before-school, after-school, all kinds of opportunities for students to do additional LEAP preparation to, just to pass the LEAP test. And teachers would show up expecting thirty kids and only get two. So we have to focus on students and motivation and a whole lot of other things other than the barriers that have been put in front of them traditionally to, to go to college and to, 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 to advance. They're going to be here, so we have to deal with them, and we have to motivate our kids to do the work necessary. And there are many things we can do, but we aren't. And that's what I like to focus on. I like to focus on children and what they need to succeed. Many of these conversations talk about adults and adult issues around governance and around professional development for teachers and everything, but very little work is being done around students and what do students need to succeed? And that's where I come in, and that's the conversations that I want to have.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall. Next question from Mr. Wilson will be about advanced credentials. So earning a diploma with basic or advanced credentials provides students with a head start to a successful future. The class of 2018, seventy-five percent of white students earned a diploma with an advanced credential. That's compared to five percent of African-American students, sixteen percent of Hispanic students, and five percent of disadvantaged students, of economically disadvantaged students. So we want to hear your reaction to this large gap. And specifically, what would you do as a school board member to address this disparity?
Yeah, that gap is just simply unacceptable. When you combine the low percentage of Black, Hispanic, and special education students who are earning advanced and basic credentials with a low percentage of those same subgroups who are not graduating on time with their peers, it paints a stark picture for just how well we're actually preparing those groups of students for success after high school. We cannot be a system where that many groups of students are not ready to be successful, are not graduating with the credentials that they need to actually be successful, whether that's in college, in trade schools, or for whatever career that they choose after they leave high school. To change, I'll be working with the, with NOLA PS to ensure we are regularly auditing what classes students are taking and looking at that broken down by subgroup. The district should be then working with schools to prioritize the supports. They need to increase the amount of Black, Hispanic, low-income, and special education students that enrolled in higher level and more rigorous coursework. We know that all of those groups of kids can, can access that coursework. We have to make sure that the schools have the support they need and that they're being held accountable to push to ensuring that those kids are in those classes. I would also be advocating for increased funding for academic, mental health, and trauma supports for those same groups of students because we know that it's not just about getting into the class. It's about being able to show up at school every single day, ready to take that AP Chemistry class, ready to take that physics class. If I am, don't have the supports, the mental health supports, if I don't have the additional academic support in school to be successful in those classes, then it doesn't matter if I'm actually taking that class or not. We have to make sure that our schools have the funding that's going directly to kids to ensure that they can be successful in these, in these higher-level classes so they get the credentials they need.
Thank you. And now your second question for round one, Mr. Marshall, is going to be the question about advanced placement. So in twenty nineteen, in the 2019 school year, economically disadvantaged students were underrepresented in AP courses, advanced placement courses. They make up seventy-seven percent of the total student population, but only made up ten percent of AP test takers. Similarly, African-American students make up seventy-eight percent of the general high school student population, but only made up eleven percent of the AP test takers. So what do you, if you could share some of what you believe contributes to these disparities and what you can do as a board member to support more economically disadvantaged and African-American students in AP courses?
You know, I, a few years ago, I had, as a school board member, I had the, the privilege of working with a group of students that applied to the XQ project to rethink high schools. And they came up with this concept of, of leadership in the school being both adult leadership and student leadership. Brilliant concept. They didn't win. There were twenty schools that won $10 million each, but they, they, they made it all the way to the final round, a, a group of students. So I worked with them, listened to them, helped them, guided them. Matter of fact, one of the students is graduating from Tulane this year, Dylan Bourne. I mean, the, we don't focus enough on the children. That's, that's the real problem. Recently, I was with a group that wanted to sue the government and make education as a, as a right. Okay, so what would make it any different from the right to vote? Where fifty percent of the people have the, I mean, we all have the right, but fifty percent of the people don't vote. The issue we have to do is tackle the issues the students will tell us for the reasons why they don't, they miss school. And I know there are a lot of reasons, by some are homeless and, and those. We can work on those issues. But if we're not working with the students and we're not focused on the children and what they need, and when we talk about equity, equity is, equity is, to me, is giving these kids what they need, looking at each, each individual kid and understanding what they need to succeed. Okay, whether, whether it's housing, whether it's, it's food, whether it's trauma, whatever they need and bringing in the resources to work with them. I mean, I have ideas on how to do these things. I've been pushing these ideas, and we're close as a district to doing that. Much of what you see here, I worked on, that you talk about in this, with, with special-needs kids and, and all of those. We created that with the CEA, with RSD, when I was the president, that negotiated those things with the RSD. So yeah, we understand a lot of, a lot of the big issues, and we're working on those. But what we don't do enough of is talk about children and what do they need and communicate with them and help them become part of the solution and not always viewed as, as problems that we have to solve for them. That's, that's where we really fail.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall. And your second question, Mr. Wilson, is going to be about truancy. So students who are chronically absent or miss more than ten percent of the school year are considered truant. What that looked like in Orleans Parish schools was a classroom of thirty students with twelve desks empty, at least ten percent or more during the school year. In January 2020, OPSB launched a new initiative called Keeping Kids in School to engage community in its efforts to reduce truancy. If you are elected, what would you do as a school board member to impact truancy in New Orleans?
Yeah, I'm glad I get to answer this question because this is something I literally, before I left school today, was talking with our school social worker about, was about truancy, especially as we think about student attendance during the time of COVID. As we just think about truancy overall, we have to first start by decriminalizing truancy in our school district. Too often, we think about truancy as an issue with a parent or a student that can only be solved by increased consequences, leading to... leading to our families and students being involved with the police and the court system. We need to take police out of the process unless there's actually criminal neglect and put more social workers into the process. I have seen firsthand, as a teacher and a special education administrator, that truancy is often the manifestation of the failure of our entire system. I don't just mean our school system, but the city and the state as well. We fail to provide adequate supports and safety nets for our families that are low-income, without housing, or experiencing ongoing traumatic events in their lives. We cannot continue criminalizing truancy and expecting different results for our kids. As a school board member, I'll be working to make sure that we define clearly what we mean by a truant student in New Orleans and clarifying what supports that we can use. I'll be pushing for more money to be going into our social work and mental health supports so that we have skilled individuals who can provide more immediate assistance in case management for our families. This is also going to require advocacy and collaboration with the city council and the mayor's office, as we need to ensure that our families have adequate access to stable housing and that transportation is not an issue. And last, we need to make sure our school start times are not also an issue. We don't need schools starting at seven-thirty and seven-forty-five. We need schools starting at eight and after eight, so that we can more easily sync up schedules with parents. Because we know that if a parent cannot get their student up for school, that oftentimes that student is not going to make it. So we have to make sure that this entire thing is not just looking at criminalizing our students and families, but thinking about the supports they need to be successful.
Thank you. And that concludes round one. So for round two, you will both get to respond to these two same questions. You'll have a chance in this first question to respond to any topics that maybe you didn't get asked about in round one. But we have asked you to respond to a lot of data on important indicators related to racial equity in education. But what issue is most important to you and what would you prioritize if you were to be elected? You'll have two minutes, and we will start with you, Mr. Marshall.
Would, you know, I love what you all came up with your conclusions in that we need to bring in all of the resources that we have available to us. We need to bring in NOLA, we need to bring in training grounds, which is a zero-to-kindergarten training program for parents and students, which at a fraction of the cost that it would take for us to invest in early childhood development, but yet are rendering the same results. There are a lot of things out there that we could be doing, but we don't move within the urgency. I'm proposing that we have an Office of Community Resources to manage those resources for schools, to bring those into our schools. I'm proposing that we have an Office of School Support and Innovation, so that we can take ideas and concepts to, from thought to actual fruition. There are many things that we can do that we aren't doing. But my background has allowed me to see a lot of things that have been tried around around students at risk, small learning communities, all of these things. I've seen all these things happen. I've worked with school improvement plans. And frankly, I ran for this because my son said, Daddy, maybe if you were on the board, people would listen to you. I am driving the conversation to talk about children and what they need. So that when, you know, the most important, the important statement in this whole document? School climate. You have a sentence, one sentence on school climate. And school climate, as you state in this, is the most important thing. I'm calling for student leadership training programs. I'm calling for values and character education. I'm calling for parental supports. I'm calling for involving the parents in a meaningful way. A resource manager on every campus, because schools will tell you that they're too busy getting these kids to pass the test to bring in those additional resources and to work with them. So we need to put a body on that campus to work with the parents, to organize the parents, to work with all of these nonprofits out there, so that they can bring these resources to the kids. Meet them where they are and meet them with the needs, with the needs that they have. A kid will not reach his potential if unmet needs continue to exist in their lives. We need to focus on children. We need to have an individual education plan for each child that allows them to soar. I'm also calling for, I'm also calling for every kid, every school, have an accelerated program. Okay, so that those kids, when they get to the point where they can take advanced classes, they're capable of taking those advanced classes and succeeding. Every kid, every school needs to have that. So a parent doesn't feel like they have to send their kid to an ALB school, but no, they've got the same programming in every school. We can mandate that. And that's what we should do. So you don't have to go across town to get the education that you desire for your kid because you think your kid is a student. But they'll be able to do that advanced work in each and every one of our schools.
Thank you. Two minutes.
We have to focus on the children.
Thank you. And Mr. Wilson, same question. What issues are most important to you and what would you prioritize as a school board member?
Yeah. As someone who's working in a school and has been working in schools, I know that when schools are held accountable to things, they put all of their money, they put all their time and energy into making sure that they reach those accountability metrics. Right now, our schools are incentivized to worry about state tests in the ACT. That is their primary focus, because that is how we hold our schools accountable. Whether a school is open or closed, whether people are feeling successful or not, is all tied into a state test. We should not be a system that is basing the success of our schools off of a state test and off of just the ACT. When you incentivize those test scores, that's all we're going to get. So we have to actually change our accountability framework to go beyond standardized tests. We need to expand it out and kind of take a little priority away from those standardized tests. And we actually need to think about the holistic performance of our schools. Our schools are doing amazing things, and they need to actually, that needs to show up in how they are held accountable and their performance. We need to think about how teacher, parent, and student surveys can be included in the performance framework, because we know that each of those stakeholders has so much information about how well a school is actually doing. And that needs to be a part of how we think about, is a school healthy or not in the New Orleans community? We also need to make sure that we have metrics around student well-being. Okay, we need to be thinking about how, there are ways that we can measure that. There are many reports out there of how you can actually measure that consistently. And that can be a part of how well our schools are doing. If we aren't thinking about our student well-being as a part of our accountability, then guess what? Our schools are not going to be incentivized and be, put as much thought into that as they do in the state test. And last, we need to think about what schools we authorize, recruit, because we need a greater diversity in our system. We need to ensure that OPSB is ready to direct, run more schools and that we have more options for parents who want to attend those schools directly run by NOLA PS and from charter operators. That gives the district an opportunity to practice what they preach and be examples of how certain approaches can be effective in schools. And then the CMOs can take that and use it in their schools. We need to also make sure that as we authorize schools, we have a greater diversity. We need more fine arts-type schools. We need more schools that are focused just on mental health. And the school board has the opportunity to do that, and they need to exercise their power to go beyond just the same college prep schools that we continue to authorize in our city.
Thank you. And now the second question for round two. Mr. Marshall, you already referenced one of the recommendations in the report, but we'll give you another chance to mention any others. Our question is, of those recommendations, are there any that you strongly agree with? And how would you actively support them?
Well, the one that I strongly agree with is the one about bringing in outside resources and getting the parents and community involved. I mean, I was part of an Oregon Bleach study some thirty years ago that clearly defined after a year-long study with parents and teachers and school people, they identified the problem that the problem with public education in the city was the fact that people, when the community was not involved in education. All of that came side-based management with an advisory board with each school, okay? A very weak charter-like recommendation, okay? And it didn't work, because the principals didn't really engage in it the way they should have. But the problem has always existed, and that is the community is not involved in public education. We have more people now serving on these boards involved in education, seeing what the problems are and trying to grasp and deal with them than we've ever had. We need to build on that. But we need to build on it by not talking about, as much about professional development and about school leadership as we do about these children and what do they need. I've seen places around the country where they are doing this work and exemplary work, creating school climates that you alluded to in your report, but did not expand on. Okay, you made the statement, but you didn't expand on it. I was up at McKinley High School that the principal was too glad to take me around the building and show me the building and take me to the gymnasium where they had their wall of fame with Eddie Robinson and, I forget the renowned football coach that was up at Grambling for so many years. Can't think of his name, but was too proud to show me that. The conversation took a pregnant pause when I said, man, I just can't wait to see your academic wall of fame. Because that's what, that's the priority in schools, right? But you walk in most schools, you can't tell the priority of what the priority is in the schools. There's companies have programs, the Renaissance Company with Jostens teaches and shows people how to motivate students to want to excel. That program was offered to schools over and over and over in this city, okay? But the school leaders didn't have time to implement that, because if they don't get these kids to pass the test, they're going to lose their jobs. And that's the reality of it. And we're not going to change that tomorrow. So we can't focus on changing the, how we grade these people, because the state is going to take the school away from them as they did before if we allow them to fail according to their metrics. So we have to do what we have to do with these children and with their parents and with the resources that we have available in our schools, I mean, in our community, through an Office of Community Resources, so we can manage that for the schools and get them invested. What I'd like to see us do is the Urban League and others have a task force around a conversation just around students. Just students. Not about the teachers, not about the leaders, not about anything else. Let's focus on the students and what they need to succeed. What they need from pre-K four to fifth grade, what they need from sixth grade to eighth grade, and what do they need in high school, because it's different. Human development is taking place in stages, okay? And the foundation has to be set with values and character and stuff from K four through fifth grade. Character counts.
Thank you, Mr. Marshall. I want to make sure that we get Mr. Wilson the chance. Well, but you will still have a chance to finish that thought in your closing comment in just a few minutes. Mr. Wilson, again, the question is around the Urban League's recommendations, and are there any that you strongly agree with and how would you actively support them?
Yeah, there were numerous recommendations in here that I supported. So hard for me to whittle down, but I got it down to four of them, and I'll share those four and then go into kind of two of them. So the ones that really stood out to me that I am fully behind and supporting is the development, recruitment, and retention of highly effective teachers. Specifically, Black teachers in our schools. Facilitating and directing community nonprofit and service providers in efforts to improve educational equity. Transparent analysis of the systemic inequities and making sure we do that through an equity lens. And holding our superintendent and his staff or her staff accountable to reducing gaps. And the first one I want to touch on is as well, the community nonprofit and service providers and facilitating them to make sure that we have a collective group of people working towards improving educational equity. We can't just talk about it. We have to actually, as school board members, go out and meet with the diverse group of organizations and then bring them into the decision-making process. Too often, this turns into a top-down method, instead of acting organically with our community organizations to ensure that, like, we are maximizing their support and what they do and what we need from our schools and what the school system can't do. When we are acting as a school board and as NOLA Public Schools, as collaborators with community organizations, we can do really amazing things. And we need to make sure that with all of those things, that we're holding NOLA PS accountable for the success of those initiatives. NOLA PS should be leading the charge in creating those community groups and bringing us together to make sure that we're driving that successful work in our schools. Tied to that, OPSB, we as school members would need to hold the superintendent and his staff or her staff accountable to reducing gaps. That means having, Frank, in open, transparent conversations about the performance of NOLA Public Schools in front of the public. That does not mean having conversations behind closed doors, having meetings in executive sessions when those things can be talked about in front of, in front of the community who need to know why school members are making decisions and why the superintendent is making certain decisions. We need, we have criteria for evaluating the superintendent, but you can ask the average person, and they have no idea how the school superintendent is held accountable. We need to be effectively communicating how our school system is doing and how effective our superintendent is and how we hold that person accountable. And last, we need to make sure that we are bringing community groups into the evaluation process and also the support of the superintendent of NOLA Public Schools. It's not just about holding the superintendent and the NOLA Public Schools accountable. It's also making sure that we, as school board members, are hoping to ensure that they have all the support they need to be successful, because when that happens, we will actually have equity in our school.
Thank you. And that closes out round two. So we will do our commitment section, and then you will each have a chance to do a closing comment. For this commitment section, we're asking you just to give a simple yes or no response. The first one is, will you commit to using the report regularly and to looking at data that is disaggregated by subgroups to inform your decisions if you are elected? Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
And Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
And the second commitment that we're asking is about racial equity. Will you commit to prioritizing and practicing racial equity throughout your term as a school board member if you are elected? Mr. Marshall?
Yes.
And Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you. And we will look forward to working with either one of you moving forward. And before we do a close for the night, we'll give you each a chance to do a closing comment. Keep it at around one minute. And this is your chance to say whatever you'd like to close out with the audience this evening. We'll switch it up, because I've been starting with Mr. Marshall all night. We're going to, let's do Mr. Wilson first.
Thank you all for having me here this evening. It has been a joy engaging in this conversation. I'm so glad that this is what we're talking about, and I'm looking forward to continuing this conversation beyond tonight and in the future. We've talked a lot about tonight, about governance. We've talked a lot about kids. I want to talk a little bit more about kids, because that's why I'm running. I'm running for all the students who I've worked with over the past ten years and who I've taught, who I've seen, who have worked their tails off to make sure that they are doing something that is not only going to set themselves up for success in life, but their families. Unfortunately, too many of our kids in our schools are not being put in the position where they can make those amazing decisions for themselves, they're having decisions made for them. Unfortunately, our families also know that they're often keep choosing between low-performing schools that are way too similar to one another. We cannot continue to make these little incremental changes to our school system and expect vastly different outcomes for families. As your next school board member in District Seven, I will work tirelessly with all of you to ensure that funding is going directly into our classrooms, that we're able to invest into mental health and trauma supports and special education services for our kids, and that we have the facilities that accommodate every type of learner, and that there is transparency in all of our decision-making. We have to be that system. We have to be the leaders as school board members to show the way. And I know that as your next school member in District Seven, I will be the one. Jamar Wilson, number 141. I look forward to your support this fall.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson. And Mr. Marshall, your closing comment.
I retired from my business after forty-some years in 2013 to do this work full-time. I've been all over the country. I've met with people discussing from funding to character-building programs for students, motivational programs, then Texas to look at their program where they have a program for ninth graders. I've seen so much. I've been involved in so much. I know what works. I know what doesn't work. This is really simple. If our kids, if we focus their attention... If our kids, if we focus their attention more on the children rather than the adults, we'd have much more success. The work isn't easy. We can't change the rules. The rules are dictated to us. But we can make a difference in these children's lives if we do the things that we need to do for them. Uh, I wish we, we had hours to talk about this, but we don't. But I hope to spend hours with the Urban League and others doing the things that we need to do uh, to make the progress that we need to make. Uh, and we need to do it with some sense of urgency. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you both again for joining us tonight. Um, and just before we uh, close out the entire forum, I want to give the audience just a couple of reminders. Um, first, that it is not too late to complete your census. So if you have not yet completed your twenty twenty census form, please do so. You can do that at mytwentytwenty.gov, and you do have until the end of October, October thirty-first. So please uh, fill out your form and remind everyone you know to do the same. Secondly, and why we are here, um, is that we have an upcoming election, so please remember to register to vote. The deadline to register via online is October thirteenth, which is this coming Tuesday, so make sure you register. And then we also want folks to know that they um, can early vote from, all the way from October sixteenth through twenty-seventh. And then, of course, Election Day is November third. Um, and this is the last uh, forum of this particular um, OPSB candidate, but we do have one more coming up on October fifteenth, and that will be um, a statewide forum on down-ballot races. So we'll be touching on a lot of the rest of what you will see on your ballot, um, after you vote for president. So a lot of important races are happening across the state, and we hope you will join us for that on October fifteenth. And you can register for that on our website at urbanleagela.org. And that will be it for tonight and for this week's forum. So again, thank you, candidates, and thank you, audience. Um, and we again look forward to working with all of you in some capacity. Have a good night.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.